Good evening and welcome to Meet the Candidates Night. I am Corey Murray, the president of the PTSA. It is an honor and a privilege for us to host this event tonight, allowing those here in attendance and joining us virtually to learn more about the candidates running for the Board of Education. Myself, along with PTSA Treasurer Nicole Enderton, will be leading the evening's question and answer period. But before we begin with the questions, I would like the candidates to take a few minutes to introduce themselves. Candidates, you will have three minutes to introduce yourself, give your background, experience, community and organization involvement, and state why you would be a valuable addition to the board. To help you stay within the time allotted, the timekeepers at the front table will indicate when you have one minute, thirty seconds, and then fifteen seconds left. At the end of your time, they will show you the stop sign. Mrs. Bauer, we will start with you.
Can you guys hear me okay? I'm Melinda Bauer. I moved to New Fane about two and a half years ago with my two boys. I've got a five-year-old and a two-year-old at home. I'm originally from Barker, so used to that small-town feel, which is what brought us back to this area. I've, in the time that we've been here, I'm an honorary alumni member. I am involved in our local church and help with activities there. I was lucky enough to be a part of the Panther Party event that was held this year, which was really exciting. My goal would be to become more involved with the district and the community just over the next several years as my kids move through school. One of the areas I feel like, you know, is an asset for me to be on the Board of Education is that my schedule is fairly flexible. So I work remotely from home as a practice manager, and it allows me to have a lot of flexibility throughout my day. So that if my kids need me, I'm there to go grab them. And so I think that opens up the door for being available for the school as well. If there's activities where they need a board member at, or somebody to be involved, my schedule gives me that flexibility to be a part of this district and really show you guys that I'm here as a positive attribute to everything you've already got going on. So that's sort of the gist of what I'm here for and why we moved to New Fane and all of that. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for coming out. My name is Emma. I also was not originally from New Fane. I moved to the district sixteen years ago. We raised two boys, my husband Jason and I, raised two boys in the district. I also grew up in a small town of a graduating class of sixty-nine. My husband was originally from Lockport. So we wanted the small-town community feel because that's what I knew growing up, and that's what I loved. So we found our way to New Fane. Tyler graduated in 2021, and Cameron is a junior this year. When I came to New Fane, I dove right in, volunteering for the PTSA, volunteering for sports boosters, volunteering on hiring committees, and athletic eligibility committees is the most recent one. So I'm constantly just, at first it became trying to make my way to meet people and to figure out what the town was about. And then I found myself just, service was what I loved to do. So I was always volunteering and asking for help. I've held board positions on the PTSA through the years, actually probably all of them. I've served on Board of Education. So I was appointed to a half-term, fulfilled that, ran again, and I was elected for a term, I served that. And I ran last year, but unfortunately I did not make it. So I'm ready to throw my hat in the ring again and hit the ground running because three years on the Board of Education, you just learn, you got your feet wet, and you're really just learning. So now I feel like I'm in a position where I know what's expected. I know where we're headed. You can see all the progress that I'm proud to say I was a part of. And I'd love to continue to be a part of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Odet. Mr. Syed?
Hi, my name is Cameron Syed. I'm a lifetime New Fane resident. I graduated from Van High School in 2016, went to SUNY Fredonia, and graduated in 2021. I am a business owner, it's out. I own New Fane Music right on Main Street. I'm a part of the New Fane Business Association. And I completed a long-term something position at the high school last year for high school chorus. I believe that I have a pretty unique perspective to offer to the school board, given my expertise and just the experiences that I've had doing that. Really want to give back to this community. I feel like I owe this school district a lot. And just want to help out in every way that I can.
Thank you, and Mr. Thomasin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. Also, thank you, PTSA, for organizing this. I feel fortunate to know most faces in this room tonight, but for those I have had the honor of meeting at, my name is Santo Thomasin, the current president of the Board of Education. I have been a lifelong resident of this community and district, originally from New Fane in 2001. I knew I wanted to stay in New Fane and invest back in the community that has given so much. Oh, I just found out from Donna Julia, who is a current fifth-grade panther. That little panther's six, so my wife is home. They're thirty, so they watch history. Community and activity involvement. You've probably seen the penny number of events and games going on within the district and community. I'm now volunteering, and my family and I are there supporting the students, the staff, and the organizations that are putting those events on. I also serve as the treasurer for New Fane Sports on sports boosters. Serving as the board president for the last year and board trustee for the last three years, I understand and appreciate the responsibility that comes with that position. It's more than just a few meetings a month, but it's a daily commitment for myself to listen and be a voice of the community and district. I've shown my level of commitment over the last three years, and I'm confident that I can continue to be an effective board member. Right now, the district has experienced some major changes as we're approaching final steps hiring and superintendent. And not only with some addressing such a crucial component, we're still in this level of work with our district-wide capital project. We have a lot of great things going on in the community in New Fane. Excited to see what the future holds. As a lifelong resident, I hope to continue to contribute my time and resources and assign all the great people that are invested in the community and district, passionate about keeping up that momentum and help the district grow with pride. Thank you.
Candidates, after the question is read, each of you will be given up to two minutes to answer. We will start with a different candidate for each question. The PTSA members keeping time will inform you of the time remaining and let you know when you get close to using the two minutes. We ask that you refrain from speaking while the other candidates are asking their questions. For the audience members, topics that may be covered throughout the evening during our question and answer period consist of the following: the strengths and weaknesses of the district, student needs, roles and responsibilities of the Board of Education, vision for the district, school budget, district needs, capital project, community involvement, and district safety. Audience members, you do have the opportunity to submit questions for consideration. Kindly fill out an index card and hand it in to one of the PTSA members at the back table. If time allows, appropriate additional questions may be selected from those submissions. Okay, let us begin. The first question this evening is, and we will repeat the questions to each candidate as we go down the table. We will start with you, Mrs. Bauer. What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities? Second part to that question. What would you, I'm sorry, what would make you an effective board member? What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities, and what would make you an effective member?
So I think the biggest role and responsibility of the Board of Education is to be a voice for the students, for the children that attend the school district. I think that is at the forefront of everything that we are doing. So I think that the board needs to make sure in that role that we are listening to the parents, the children, and the teachers, staff, and administrative support that we have in the school district. It's our responsibility to be that voice and to move this district in a direction that is good for all, every child that attends the school district, for the parents that are in the community, and for just the general community. We hold the responsibility of some of the budget. That affects the entire community, not just the parents and the kids that attend the school. So maintaining a budget that gives us the resources that we need while also keeping in mind of the community that surrounds us and how that affects them. So those are some of the biggest roles and responsibilities that we have. I think a way that I can be effective in that is that I'm somebody who likes to think outside of the box. So I want to hear, what are the concerns that we have? What are the positive things that we have in this district? Not just our, you know, things that we don't like or things that we feel are wrong, but what are we doing as a positive? What are our strong suits? And then how can we bring that to the forefront as well as working on building this district into what it should be? It used to be the school of excellence, and I think that we're on a path to make that happen again. It's just a matter of being a part of the community, listening to the kids, listening to the parents, talking to the staff and the teachers, and putting all of that into motion to make sure that we're taking care of everybody the best way that we can with keeping the children as they can focus throughout all of that.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to Mr. Syed. And the question again is, what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities, and what would make you an effective board member?
I believe that the board should focus on really providing a vision for the future of the education of the children in the district. The teachers provide that firsthand education. So finding the balance between, obviously, the community members and parents of the children, the teachers, and the children themselves to make sure that they are receiving the greatest education that they can. The budget, all of the things that go into the budget obviously will affect the education. I believe that I would provide a, like I said, an interesting perspective to the board. The, the things that I've gleaned from teaching the past year and teaching privately at my business, I feel like have shown me how children in, within this community feel and the way that they kind of view their education. And I really want to support them in becoming effective members of society, contributing back to the community.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Odet?
No, firsthand, the roles and responsibilities are, you know, adopting the annual budget, allocating resources to meet the needs of our students but to still be fiscally responsible to the community and to the taxpayers. The biggest one right now, they're looking for a new superintendent, hiring the superintendent and evaluating the superintendent each year, adopting the school calendars, the annual audit, approval of facility plans. Those are all like things sitting around that table that you're, you know, people don't know that you're doing, but you're doing all of this while still trying to create a balance in the classrooms, making sure that we are overseeing, that the students are getting the best education that they can be getting. You know, that we're also taking care of and honoring those contracts that we sign with our staff, supporting the progress of our district, and continuing to support and move forward with what we have already done and hopefully what we're going to be building on. I know sitting around the table, you learn to be more broad-minded. You learn how to listen more effectively to those around you and how to agree and disagree more effectively, building positive relationships with the board members and the community and the staff in the district, all of the staff, because together, we are all working together, and that's the only way it moves forward. You have to be an effective communicator and be able to listen to people and talk to people. And I just think that I would be an effective part of the board again because I have an understanding of all that. I'm ready again, like I said before, to move forward, continue working and planning to secure the best educational experiences for not only our current students, but for the students to come in the future.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Thomasin, what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
What the other candidate said is pretty spot-on. There's a lot of that involvement. Drilling down the true definition of the board members, establish direction, goals, and priorities for the school district, determine policy, budget, leadership, and administration. But to me, it's a lot more than that. It's about being part of the committee, the community, being someone the community members can come to with questions and concerns, and knowing you'll ask tough questions to leadership and the administrators in the following with those results. Focusing on education, listening to the students. The students are in the schools. The students are what we're trying to tailor education to and tailor these opportunities to. It's about being president of the district, attending the events that we're building, participating, volunteering as much. We are fortunate enough to have several groups in the district that give so much back to our students. So I feel like we have strong foundation on that. Being effective on the board, I feel, show metal, the last two years, we've done a lot of progress, a lot of momentum going in the positive direction of the board, continuing to be a part of that.
Thank you. And then teachers and staff, because at the forefront of everyone's mind, what areas of safety do you believe the district can improve upon?
I think the revamping of, the capital project revamping the security systems in the entryway. I know it's not complete yet in every building, but it's part of the capital project, and we will get there. I think that's a great start. But I think another focus should also be training our teachers to know what to do in a crisis situation so that all, they can effectively teach their students how to respond in a crisis situation. I also think that we should be working closely with law enforcement to maybe come in and do drills to show them how that could look in the event of an actual. I always think that the education of, you know, see, it's such a sad and hot topic, but seeing what has been happening in schools, we can never be too careful. You always have to keep educating yourself on, how can we tackle this issue if it were to arise? And we hope that it never does, but if it were to arise, are we prepared?
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, everyone's mind. What areas of safety do you believe the district can improve upon?
So that's something that I've thought about quite a bit. I think that Mrs. Odet pointed out a few of the things I think the capital project did do quite a bit for safety in the sense of re-establishing our rest of you so that there's a two-door entry system instead of just being able to walk right into the school. Also having it so that you have to ring a bell and somebody has to see you and ask you a question before you even come into the school is great. Are there areas that we can improve in that? Absolutely, I think the training our teachers, our staff, our administrative departments to feel confident if there was an emergency of any kind, do they feel like they can handle it? Because at the end of the day, they are the front line to keep our children safe. So if the administrative department, the teachers, the staff of the school don't feel prepared for any type of emergency, that's going to reflect on our children not feeling comfortable either. And not that they should feel comfortable in an emergency situation, but they shouldn't be scared. They should feel safe, they should feel protected. They should feel like the staff that's within that building is looking out for their best interest. And if they see their teacher poised and put together in an emergency situation, those kids are going to respond to that teacher or that administrative person or whoever it might be in the school. So I think practicing drills, getting our kids involved, educating them on, if you see a police officer, it's not always a bad thing. They're here to protect us, they're here to be a part of this community. And so making sure that we involve the fire department, the paramedics, and the police department, educating our kids also allows them to feel safe walking into the school, knowing that everybody is here to protect them and make sure they're getting what they need, not just in the education, but also in getting to go home with their parents every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr.?
Just to kind of, I can only say the thing, I believe that the changes to the buildings have been really quite substantial, especially in regards to safety. And I remember, I think it was sometime last year, there was a external threat happening in the local district. It wasn't in New Fane, but New Fane went into a lockdown anyways. And that, like, that kind of hypervigilance and that kind of proactivity from the administration, I think was crucial to continue with protecting our children. There are other safety precautions that could be implemented to like individual classroom doors. But I really think the best thing is more training for the teachers and making sure that they're staying up to date with all of our, all of the procedures that are in place to handle these situations.
Thank you. What areas of safety do you believe the district can improve upon?
Sure, I'm going to talk about two different kinds of safety, physical and emotional safety. Kids can't learn and teachers can't teach if they don't feel safe. The social and emotional wellbeing of some kids have taken a hit over the past few years with the pandemic, and it's kind of affected their day-to-day learning. So for some physical things, we need to partner with the buildings. We talked about the secure entrances to each building. Those are fantastic. We've added auto door locks to all the doors within the district. So you just pull the door closed and it locks. No need to turn it here or anything. Some other things that are kind of overlooked, cutting branches so they're six feet above the ground so you can clearly line a sight out of the building, making sure bushes and shrubs aren't going three feet tall so nobody's hiding within those bushes. There's those little extra things that add to the security in the buildings that New Fane does great job with. Emotional safety, we need to continue to support the kids in the building. They need to feel the trust with our teams so they can go over them with the concerns if they had internally your concerns. They are a witness of. Emotional safety takes additional wide effort. It starts every morning with a warm greeting the students should receive when they enter our building for the day. So overall, the student staff, we know we need to prepare for everything. That we run drills, consult industry experts, make sure the district is handling the situation. Most drills need to be prepared to be brief at the end of how they went down. We need to talk to stakeholders, see what we can improve on, see what went, see what went bad. We need to keep running those drills over and over and not be complacent with where we're at. And as a district, we need to communicate as much as possible with the families when there are issues happening in our district, provide as much notice and transparency as always. So if there is something happening, the community and parents know.
Thank you. And our school district.
So I believe that with New Fane's district side being a small biz, that that allows our students a lot of great opportunities. The kids are less likely to be cut from the sports team, musicals. There's a role for everyone. There's lots of different activities for students to be involved in. And the teacher-to-student ratio is a big part of the quality of the experience. I believe New Fane has a good balance of the teachers, those students.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasin, what are the strengths of our school district?
Thank you. I think a strength for the district right now is the continued success of our four-year graduation rates. This past year, the district boasted a ninety-six percent graduation rate highest it's been in the last eight years. To me, that's a true testament of the educators and administrators we have. That's also ranked first among similar-sized regional schools. We also had a fifty-one percent regional diploma with advanced designation, which is also just a ninety percent or more on all regions exams. And something Mr. Syed said about the teacher-to-student ratio, New Fane actually has a thirteen-to-one student ratio, which is below the state average of fourteen-to-one, which, like you said, allows a lot more opportunities for students.
Thank you.
As a sentiment of Mr. Syed and Mr. Thomasin, I would also span, you know, athletics. We are putting out league champions and state champions. We have robotic clubs and music clubs. And you name it, we, that we have allowed that for our students. More in the primary levels, I like to say the instructional coaches that we've brought in to go out and bring information on programs back to our young children have been very substantial in helping, not only helping our children learn better, but also helping the teachers collaborate better, which has given them great successes as they move through. There's a RECA and Amplify, those are math and language programs at the elementary levels that they're using that have shown great success in the past three years that they've been using them, they've been successful with them. I know that for a while, there was a struggle with finding leadership in the buildings, but I think that we have got a hold on that as well. And it seems that everybody is, you know, really a cohesive unit and moving in the right direction.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bauer, what are the strengths in our school district?
So I would agree, I think, you know, the biggest strength is our small class sizes. It allows our children to get individualized attention. It also allows teachers to check in with the students more often and figure out, you know, who's not meeting the requirements they should for the grade learning? Is there active support we can bring in for those kids? Are there kids who are excelling in programs where we need to find an avenue for them so that we can keep them interested in learning? And so I think those are big things that New Fane has done a really good job with because we are able to give each kid some individualized attention, which allows them to really grow and feel like they're being heard and seen in the school. They're getting challenged on a daily basis. They also get the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities. So not just your sports, but also in music and art, technology, drama. All of these things are an asset to them as they continue to move through school. And I think New Fane School District has the opportunity to really thrive in that department because we can give each kid the opportunity to try something, to give him a chance to try baseball, try drama, try all these things, which is just going to make them more well-rounded once they leave New Fane and go on to college or wherever they end up afterwards, a technology school, allowing them to have the opportunity to go to BOSI's and learn a trade. All of those things are positive to being in a smaller school district that can focus on a lot of individual needs for the kids and push them to have a successful career after they leave New Fane. So I think those are the, you know, things that we are doing really well as a district.
Thank you.
So I guess my vision would be to return New Fane to a school of excellence. It's kind of an echo from earlier. I'm very proud of this school district. And I'm very proud of the direction that everything was going. And I just, I just want to see it get there. I want to see it make the final push to a school of excellence again. I think that there are a lot of great opportunities for the students currently. I have some ideas for some more opportunities that could be brought in. I know that there's a very recently formed esports club at the high school. That's really cool. There's lots of good ideas being brought into the district. I think it's a really, really cool time to be involved in the school and the community.
Thank you.
So I would agree that, you know, like, I think the vision should be to get New Fane back to being a school of excellence. I think that's the goal of everybody in the community and in the district itself, between the staff and students. I think the vision of the district should be to produce well-rounded, confident individuals who can achieve their full potential while they're here, but also once they leave us. The goal is to prepare these kids to succeed after they leave New Fane. And so I think that our vision should be to give them every opportunity to do that. And so I think we should do, we should support their learning. We should also announce and announce and celebrate their achievements. So when somebody's done something well, we should be talking about it as a district, as a community. We should make people aware of the, all of the great things that come out of New Fane. And I think that allows us to grow our community. It's gonna encourage people to wanna come here. It's gonna encourage parents to wanna enroll their kids in this district. And so I think our vision should be to, to just show everybody all of the great things that we can offer by continuing to push our kids to be excellent and to be a part of the community, not just the district itself.
Thank you.
Not just asking districts to educate kids anymore. Some instances, districts are raising kids, providing breakfast, lunch, and probably dinner too at some point. It's not just reading, writing, and math anymore either. The district should prepare these kids to excel in a very challenging, ever-changing world. They must adapt and ensure that their student is ready for that. The vision would be to help make New Fane a destination district, kind of like what Mrs. Bauer was talking about. To attract talent is to move to New Fane and attract top talent that will remain in the district for a long term. So I guess in a single statement, my vision is for the district to provide high-quality education, in a safe, respectful, inclusive environment that builds the foundation for life for them.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donnell.
That New Fane has been excellent to my family, to my boys, and I hope to see it continuing to grow. Growing our district with all of the new improvements that we have now and that hopefully we will continue to build upon. I hope that it brings more people into the district so that they too can have the experiences that my children have. And like I said earlier, it's not just for our children today, but in the future, in order for our district to grow, we have to be in position to lead this district to grow. So I think that everybody has said everything that I would have said, and I do think we are a school district.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thomasi, as a board member, how will you be visible throughout the community?
Visible throughout the community. We share the responsibility to provide best educational experience where we would be prepared down with the country for their choice. I think our community is involved as a two-way street, and that means we need the community members to be involved in the district as well. Give the board all types of feedback, concerns, good or bad, and not being afraid to approach any board member with any concern they have, knowing that we'll have an answer. On the other side, the board members should be present to the community as much as possible. Again, you've probably seen me at most of the events and games happening in the district. I try to make myself accessible as much as possible, whether that's taking a phone call, nine in the morning, Saturday morning, or nine at night, last night, or not. We're accessible at all times, as possible. I'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Mrs.
Have the opportunity to meet with the couple of you in the spirit of the bus drivers, you and the teachers, you and. And what I found interesting and refreshing is that they want to meet you. They want to talk to you. They want their voices heard and they want you to hear it and they want you to be an advocate for them. So I think it's important to listen to the groups of people in our community and be that advocate for them, even if you're just bringing it back to the board for something for them to chew on. People wanna be heard. I think they want transparency. So I think it's important to, to be that voice. I also agree with Santo or Mr. Thomasi, excuse me. Visibility, if, if they can't see you, you know, how can they talk with you? So being that I'm a sports mom, I'm a very active in the, in the sports world. I'm always at a game, mine or my children's or somebody else's. And I also am available for committees as well, so I make myself available to our staff and the district as well.
Thank you. And then visible throughout the community.
So I think a lot of similar things, just being more of a presence in the community. So going to not just school functions, but going to community events. So, you know, I had the opportunity to go to the carousel cleanup and get to talk to just people who live in the community, learn a little bit about where they come from, the things that they're looking for. Being involved in, you know, our local church has helped to build our community, talk to people, get to hear about the things that they would like to see improved within the, the district, learn about the things that they think are really great that are happening. So I think the, being a part of the board would include not just being at sporting events and musicals and things like that, which are very important and we should be at, but also making sure we're out in the community and people can know who we are. They know what the board does. They can ask us questions. And they can just learn a little bit more about where we're all coming from and what our common goals are. So I think, you know, being a board member, just diving into the community fully, as well as the school district and making sure that people just feel like there's a familiar face that they can come talk to, that they can engage with and that they know is, is listening. And in their mind is working on a way, how can we show this, this positive thing in the community? Where, where can we spread it? If there's something that we need to fix in the, the district or that there's a concern with, who do we bring it to and how do we, how do we find solutions to some of these problems? So I think just being more involved, being out there, introducing ourselves and trying to have a board member at every sporting event. So I know it's not feasible for everybody to be there, but can we have one at every event so that people can talk to you, see you, get to know, know you have a better understanding of where we're all coming from, I think.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Syb?
So I, in, in my, in my business, I, I run bi-annual performances for my students. They all will get up and will play, you know, Twinkle Twinkle Little Star on the guitar. It's really cute and very slow. So I, I'm, I'm in the community doing that. They're all in the public. I, I volunteer at the Diner County Parents' Festival. You know, so I, my, I, I involve myself in lots of different community things. And, you know, in addition, I volunteered my time at musicals. I played with the, the middle school band, football games, new stadium. You know, so just continuing to do that, continuing to expand my involvement to groups like the, the Lions Club, you know, other local communities that are interested in, in building up New Fane.
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, issues facing our school district and do you have a specific suggestion for improvement?
So I think, I don't think there's anything that stands out as a major issue. I think overall, the school district is, is doing a really good job with adopting the curriculum, making sure the kids are getting what they need as far as resources go. I think that from my own standpoint, I think safety is the biggest thing that we need to really focus on for the kids. And that doesn't just mean like in the school building itself, but these kids are getting on a bus or they're getting dropped off by their parents. And so just making sure that we have a connection with every person who's involved with our kids, whether it's the person who's picking your kid up at your house, getting into the school safely, the, you know, getting them into the building. And so I think the, I guess what I'm trying to say is just having open communication between every department to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure our children are getting the education they need. They're getting a, a lunch or breakfast that they need. They're getting on that bus and getting to school safely. So I don't think there's anything that stands out as a major concern. I think just trying to improve on the overall not just safety, but also just on the overall feel for the kids when they're coming into the, into the building. I think the vision for that would be just as a board, being involved in all of that. So being open to listening to people's suggestions, being open to listening to people's concerns and trying to find ways that we can continue to improve just across the board in general. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you see as one major issues facing our district and do you have specific suggestions for improvement?
Thank you. Well, we'll call it a major issue. I'll call it an area of opportunity. I would say, so the enrollment in the district, we've dropped a little over thirteen percent over the last five years, which is definitely an area of opportunity in the district. Something I mentioned earlier is we need to attract families in the district to make New Fane that destination district. I believe we're making great strides right now. We need to continue building on that to increase our enrollment. The last couple of weeks, I've been fortunate enough to make my way over to the stadium and we've been hosting events for neighboring schools to be on, be on the field. I saw Akron Wilson playing a baseball game. I saw Roy Hart and Parker playing softball. So it's that visibility to maybe people who wouldn't have had the opportunity to see what great things we have going on down here in New Fane and attracting them. Say, if I'm gonna move, let's talk about New Fane. Let's talk about living and building a life there and that'll help with that enrollment because thirteen percent over five years is something we need to work on.
Thank you. What do you see as the major issues facing our school district and do you have specific suggestions for improvement?
Obviously, I think safety concern is one that all school districts share. Personally, for me, I, I think that student discipline in the last few years is something that needs to be addressed. The way disciplinary issues have been resolved is I believe to be improved. I don't know if that comes from the board per se, but just kind of putting that out there is, is something I feel we still need to address. From, from my time when I was, I was teaching last year. And COVID obviously was a, was a big part of, you know, education and trying to figure out how to run a school during that time. An astronomical challenge. But I, I believe that, that we can, we can hope to start to see a return of some advocacy in regards to student discipline.
Thank you. What, what do you see as the major issues facing our school district and do you have specific suggestions for improvement?
I, again, I don't, just like some of the other candidates said, I don't believe that it's necessarily an issue, but an opportunity. COVID did wreak havoc on the mental health of our students. And I think that that is something that we still are working through and still addressing until this day. So I believe like mental health, education, and diversity education with gender and race, I think that we need to have programs that are helping our educators learn so that they can better upeducate and understand the children in our district and their needs moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasi, what are the top needs for our district?
Thank you. Something to talk about a lot is helping our students be college and career-ready when they leave our high school. What does that look like? Besides offering a twenty-plus college and AP courses, we need to understand that all students are not moving onto another level of education. We need to start providing our students guidance from the younger age in school, providing education, courses, and opportunities that fit a child's strength and skills. Keep investing in our technology and STEM programs. We also need to work with kids on soft skills or essential skills that we talked about, basically kind of get lost throughout the years. Some examples are time management, communication, well, holding eye contact, and adaptability. These skills aren't learned through a textbook or a home book. These are some skills that we need to make sure kids have. We truly want them to be college and career-ready when they leave New Fane.
Thank you very much. Mr. needs for our district?
I would agree with Mr. Thomasi. Life skills, life skills are in, in all districts. We need to be helping our students be prepared for life. Whatever that path is for them, whether it be college, a trade, the workforce, that is our goal, is to prepare them for that because they, we may be the only ones who are helping them there. I think we need to support our staff. I'm not saying that we don't, but I think we need more support for our staff in terms of, at the primary level, when we can have more support staff for our educators so that they can focus more on teaching our, our students versus correcting behaviors. Yeah, I just believe that we need to support the progress of our district and secure the best educational experience for our students.
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, what are the top needs for our district?
So I think you guys have touched on a lot of those needs. I think that something that we have sort of maybe lost a little bit, not just the district, but in general through COVID, we lost the, the need to make school a priority for kids. And so I think kids need to have that reintroduced, um, how important school is, being there every day, being in front of your teacher, being around other kids, and make education a priority for them so that they can focus on learning and having social interactions and getting involved in activities and being a part of the school itself. I think that having more electives for kids, so classes that offer some sort of financial aspect for them. So they're learning about investing when they get older, how important it is to have a 401K, all of these life skills that they're gonna need not just after school, but also as they get older, that if they miss that opportunity or that learning early on, it's not gonna be at the forefront when they move on from New Fane. So I think just having electives for different financial classes, bringing the importance of even like a foreign language or having more technology classes, more science-based classes. The world is moving in a certain direction. And so making sure we're giving the kids the opportunity to see that and be a part of it is gonna be huge in the success for them when they leave you. So I think those would be some of the needs within the district.
Thank you. Mr. Syb, what are the top needs for our district?
I believe that life skills are the critical. And, and giving students opportunities to really socialize with one another face-to-face, screen-to-screen, through, through clubs or, or extracurriculars or just any, any, you know, more open forum class. I think that that would provide our students with the wherewithal to affect the members of society.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donell.
By listening to our educators and to our families in the community, by being transparent, by communicating to know what those needs are so that we can allocate the resources to meet the needs. That's a short sweet answer.
Thank you.
We need to listen. We need to, the educators will tell us and we need to hear them.
Thank you. Mr. Syb, how should the board address the different needs of all students?
Yeah, I fully agree with that. I had somebody taught last year. I mean, it was a short stint, but it was, it was good. And I, I learned a lot from speaking to other lifetime teachers in the district, most of whom I had as a student myself and was working as a coworker. You know, and just, just hearing their perspective on everything. You know, well before they knew I was going to run for school board, you know, it was totally biased. There's no power play. It's nothing. So just really like taking consideration, not just what the teachers had to say, but with the parents too. Open communication. I feel like being a good listener is the best trait for a school board member.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasin, how should the board address the different needs of all students?
Yeah, it's been a long, a little like a touchdown in the last topic is providing education courses and opportunities to fit students' strengths and skills. Listening to the educators in the building, listening to guidance conversations, spend that time with students, parent and board, the next step. Recognize that education is not a cookie cutter experience. Well, kids can have different educational experiences the kid right next door. Make sure we're adaptable to address that. Provide every opportunity we can to make sure that, like I said before, a child is college and more career ready when they leave Newfane.
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, how should the board address the different needs of all students?
So I think that goes with just communicating between the staff, the students, and the parents. But I think on a grander scale as well as including the parents in the conversation. The teachers are obviously their frontline, the staff, the administrative department. They're going to recognize kids that are in need of support, kids that are excelling in certain areas. But also involving the parents in that conversation to find out, are there things they're seeing at home where they're struggling? Are there areas where they feel like they need maybe extra support? And as a district, can we provide that support for them? So listening to parents, involving parents, making sure the teachers are feeling heard, the administrative department is feeling heard. Making sure we have resources available for kids, whether they need, you know, academic intervention services where we're catching kids early that aren't meeting the requirements that we have set for them. So are we providing resources to those teachers and to the staff and to those children to make sure that they're getting what they need? Kids that are excelling in programs or at an early age, are we offering anything to encourage them to continue to learn and grow? Where we don't start to see those kids become bored and show behaviors because they're just not being challenged. So I think in all of that, two staff retention, so making sure we're keeping our teachers involved in conversations. We're making sure that we're keeping a core group of teachers in this district. They're going to see these kids through their career and recognize their areas where they need help, areas where they have done really well and excel. And just be a part of their entire career in the district will also help just provide a better education for those kids. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you play in supporting the education of our children?
Yeah, it's kind of like we talked about earlier, how community involvement is is a two-way street. And the community needs to be present and coming to these events and recognizing and getting to know the members of the school board. Getting involved in prior committees and all the different committees that we had going on in the district, district planning, district safety. All that stuff that's available to the community and public. Get involved in the environment, buy your feet back, get bad and different. More information we have, the better we're going to go there. Don't be afraid to rock the boat with with a bad comment or a bad idea. Something we've heard was, you don't get any movement without friction. So pause the friction. Help us get involved, or get involved, help us move the district in the direction we all see.
Thank you. Mrs. Odet, what role should the community play in supporting the education of our children?
The involvement. Throw your hat in the ring. Be a part of something. Step up. We have the alumni association, the PTA, the boosters, the board of education. Put yourself out there. Be a leader in your community. Teach your children. Show your children what it's like to volunteer, what it's like to help out. Because that's going to produce leaders too. That's going to produce, they're going to learn those behaviors. They're going to want to be involved. I think the community should always be involved. The more you know. Ask your questions. Don't be a keyboard warrior. Put yourself out there. If you have a question, a concern, a comment, share it. Transparency and transparency is important.
Thank you very much. Mr. Seid, what role should the community play in supporting the education of our children?
So the school is here to support the children first and foremost. The community in turn has to support the school as well. It takes the village to raise a child. We're all here working to do the same. We all have the same mind, right? We're all trying to educate and bring up a whole generation of functioning people. Keeping, keeping all of the speaking of functioning people in society. I guess that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bauer, what role should the community play in supporting the education of our children?
So I think in general, the community is really what drives the district and what drives education within our school system. So something I found interesting just over the last couple of weeks and going down this path of, you know, running for the board of education is a lot of the people in the community don't realize how important your board of education is and how much they affect the school, the kids, the community itself. And so I think, you know, something that we could do to try and help involve the community more in education and in the district is educating them on what the board of education is here for. The community votes on a budget every year and a lot of, a lot of people don't recognize how important that is. It doesn't just affect your taxes, but it affects the resources that are available to the kids even in the district. And so I think getting the community more involved may take the board of education in the district reaching out and being more a part of the community as well. Going to town board meetings, asking questions, showing our interest in wanting to not just grow the district, but grow the community as a whole. And I think if we're putting that same interest and involvement out there, we'll see it get returned, you know, ten times over where people are going to want to be a part of it. So I think the community is really what drives all of this. And so the areas that maybe they just don't understand and haven't really played a role in, we could help educate them and kind of give them the drive to to want to see this district do well, to want to see people come to this community and raise their families, to keep Newfane, you know, an up and coming town and encourage the growth of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Odet, has the district done well over the past year?
I think we touched on that when we talked about the strengths of the district, our graduation rates, all of the opportunities that are afforded to our students, the capital project gains, the programs that we're supporting in our curriculum. But so just the support that we have given to the district and that the district has given to our students. I feel that the strengths that I spoke on earlier kind of encompass all of that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasin, in your view, what has the district done well over the past year?
Yeah, a lot of that goes on, I kind of touched on in the strengths of the district, the success of the graduation rate. Being adaptable and knocking places when trying to look for alternative opportunities like Anthe Bay. And we can add those programs, invest in those programs, giving teachers the personal development days, the professional development days to dive into kind of send the team to Anthe Bay, which is doing wonders in K through five program. Hiring staff has been a strength as well. We don't have any open racks anymore. We're hiring long-term teachers who are here to make a long-term impact. That goes from pre-K, K all the way up to administrators and the global.
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer?
I would have to agree with a lot of what has already been said. I think the fact that our curriculum that we have in place right now gives our it sets the foundation for the teachers, but it also gives them a chance to have a little bit of freedom in there to engage the kids and make sure that we're not just teaching this one thing, right? We are, this is our backbone of it, but we can add our own interpretations into it. We can hit kids in a different way that we see are struggling in certain areas. So I think that's been a huge thing that's been done really well is allowing the teachers to have a little bit of flexibility in that curriculum. I think the capital project has been a huge asset in the sense of we've got some wonderful facilities that got put into place. We have a lot more to come. But things that I've even noticed is you have kids and teams and people coming from other areas to see the facilities and play on these fields to be a part of it. And so I think that's a huge, huge thing for the school district to show that we're investing in our own success. And so for them to come and see that, it's going to encourage people to want to come to Newfane and be a part of it. So I think those are some of the things that have been done really well over the last year.
Thank you. Mr. Seid, in your view, what has the district done well over the past year?
I think all of the, I mean, everything that everyone has already said, I absolutely agree with. All of the safety advancements that have come with the capital project that I think are much needed and well overdue. And I believe all of the, all of the teachers within the district really I mean, like I've said, I had most of them as a student, really stand by that and their belief in our children. And all the time that they give outside of just the classroom. So many of the teachers and their coaches, they run clubs, they really, they really are a backbone of the schools. I think adding any more long-term teachers. It seems like we're trending in the right direction. Newfane is on.
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, is there an issue that motivates you to serve on the board of education?
Yeah, and I think I touched on it quite a bit, but one of the driving forces for me to sort of put my name out there and to be a bigger part of the district was my concerns with safety. And I know that we've talked about it a lot, but I think it's really important. You know, I put my kids on the bus and they get to school and the hope is that they get there and they get to come home again. And that was really my push to run for the board, is to see the safety within the school improve. And not just in the general context of like, let's secure the building, let's but also just educating the kids, the administrative department, and the staff on what safety means. Recognizing kids who are struggling, pulling them aside to find out, you know, like, you seem like you're having a bad day today. What's going on? You seem like you're out of sorts, you know, so the mental health side of things where we can do a better job of just picking up on the little things and making sure that we're offering resources to help keep the kids safe, not just in a physical way, but also in their mental health, to try and prevent any emergencies down the road from happening. So that was really the big thing for me to run is to try and encourage our our district to be the forefront for security, show other school districts, this is, this is what we're doing. This is why we're doing it. Our kids are being educated. They're being trained. They understand. When they walk into this building, they are seeing their teachers who they know their name, they know their family members. All of that makes them feel safe. And so I think as a district, keeping our staff retention as well as providing safety in other aspects is really important. And really the forefront for why I decided to run for the board of education.
Mr. Seid, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the board of education?
Honestly, not really. I, I think I said in my opening, I really just felt compelled to try to give back to the school district. I want to, and not just the school district, serve the community as well. Be here to be a voice for community members to communicate with school and support teachers to communicate with, you know, the school board. And really just give my time to the district that has given so much. I know who I am today because I was a Newfane man. I want to give that back in my life.
Thank you. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the board of education?
No issues particular. I just wanted to continue being an advocate for public education. To continue serving and all of the great things that we've been building on to continue building on that. Because if our district grows, our community grows and vice versa. So.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasin, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the board of education?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's one particular issue. It's being in involvement with the district and making a meaningful impact to the district, the town, the area that's given me so much where I grew up and just have countless memories here within the district, even on the stage. More specifically, it's just to help ensure that we are physically responsible as a district, that we provide the greatest opportunities and education we can to students as well. Being physically responsible to the community and making that a manageable expense as we all are in community, providing subrogation to the kids.
Thank you. Mr. Seid, what about the thing?
I love the type of community is here. My wife is in Newfane a lot. I've played with the Chris Hart's band on occasion. You know, I just, I love this whole, Chris Hart is a high school band teacher. I didn't know that. But I just, I love every part of this community. I love, I love walking out of my house on Main Street and seeing, you know, community members weeding the flower beds. I love it when they hang banners for Memorial Day. Volunteered my time at the Memorial Day service this year, helping out with their sound system. It's just such a great, such a great place to live. I really had no idea where I was going to end up after college. Since getting a degree in jazz guitar doesn't really provide one with a job. But I couldn't be happier that I'm now back here. And to really just to own a business in town and get to know all the business association members. I know that I'm just rambling at this point, but I love moving. Like, it's such a great place to live.
Thank you. Mrs. Bauer?
So there's a lot of things that I love on Newfane. I'm originally from Barton, so the biggest draw for me in Newfane was the same feel, that close-knit community. Being able to walk out into Mount, you know, down Main Street, Newfane, and you see familiar faces, you see people that you know. Newfane allows you to build a family outside of your family. You get to meet people and you get to bring them into your life and you get to have them as a support. There's a lot of opportunity in Newfane. You know, there's a lot of great businesses that are here that do a lot of community involvement. You've got art shows that happen, you know, with kids out, this is not even within the school. They've got, you know, I'm blanking on the name, but there's, you know, there's music, there's art. Those involve the kids. Those encourage people to come out and be a part of it. I just enjoy being able to be a part of something that's bigger than what we realize. Newfane has so much to offer to everybody that lives here, being close to Lake Ontario, being able to go fishing, being able to enjoy the outdoors. And, you know, those are a lot of the reasons that my family and I moved back to this area. My husband graduated from Newfane and something we found interesting was no matter where we lived, we always talked about home and home to us in this area. There's just a different feeling you have when you're, when you're here and when you're involved in the community. And so, you know, there's not anything that I can say that I don't like about Newfane. I think it's been a really good transition for us. And I think it just has a lot to offer to make you really feel like you're a part of something. Um, and I think it just has a lot to offer to make you really feel like you're a part of something.
Thank you. What do you love about New Fane?
I mean, where it began, 40 years of New Fane in the song. Lots of love within this, to put in this community. I love that, um, my kid can go to school, you know. Learning from teachers I have worked for, to build that long-lasting memory with those teachers, to learn from friends I went to school with. It's just great, like, and that reassures that. My kids getting an education from someone I trust, great educator, someone who's part of this community who can kind of. Relate that small-town feel to, to the kids. Like, um, the other candidates said, New Fane is a small-town community. Walk up anywhere in town and run into 10 people you know who wave to you, will ask how you're doing, they know. A lot about your life, I know about their life, it's, it's New Fane, um. You say that and people just know what it means, what you say, what you say to them, you know. A lot of great departments here, I couldn't just pin down a few, whatever.
Thank you. Mrs. Odette.
I love Panther Field. I love it, love it, love it, it's such a cool, um, new part of the town and I love riding on games under the lights and the electricity. Through the stadium, um, faces young and old, it was so amazing. I also love that I wasn't from this town, but I came into this town, my husband and I knew nobody. Um, I volunteered in the district with those little kindergartners and first graders reading their books to me and exchanging books. And I love that the teachers welcomed me and, um, I loved being able to serve on all of the committees and boards and that I've served on. I love the lasting relationships that my boys have developed with their friends and that I have developed with their friends' families in this district. I feel like some of them are lifelong friendships and that's rare. There's so much to love about New Fane, I love that I can walk around the town and feel completely safe and welcome and happy. And I just love it. And I, did I mention I love Panther Field? Love it.
Thank you very much. In our program, so I'm going to go ahead and ask them. Um, we'll start here with you, uh, Mrs. Bow with the first question. With increased school shootings and other shootings across the country, do you feel, I'm sorry, what do you feel about adding additional armed security to the school?
Um, that's a great question, um, so I think that armed security sounds, you know. Uh, like a lot when you're talking about your kids walking into school and seeing a bunch of armed security surrounding them or they're going to. See that as more of a nervous energy. Um, so I think that something that would, would be a big, an asset in this current world that we're living in and the things that are happening. Is, you know, we used to have resource officers in the schools, walking around, um. Being a part of the school so that they, the kids felt safe seeing that person, it wasn't intimidating, it wasn't scary, um, it wasn't fearful for them. Um, I think that there are other areas that we can use instead of having physically armed people within the school. Um, the sheriff's department does a great job of driving around to every school and just making sure that they're seen. Um, so I think involving them more, having them do, you know, different, um, activities with the kids, um, and having. Having people in each school that are there for safety, but not necessarily being armed in the school. Um, I think is, is more important, um, for there to be a presence where they can see someone and they understand that they're there. To help protect them and keep them safe without there being a fear, um, involved there. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Said other shootings across the country, what do you feel about getting additional armed security to the school?
Yeah, well, we do have an armed SRO, School Resource Officer in the district currently who travels between the buildings, um, it's very present. Throughout the district, throughout all times of day. I'm not an industry expert on more armed security in the districts, I've engaged in those conversations with districts who have. I'm actually data on. There are, there are pros and cons, what's worked for them, what hasn't worked for them, I don't know. I don't think I'd buy us to be the guinea pig to just try out, put in armed guards throughout the school, I want. Get as much data as I can and make an educated decision on that. Not just as a board, not just as a school, but as a community, talk about it, make sure it's vetted through the, before we just personally. Put armed guards in every building room, like I said, we do have the armed SRO, it's present within the district at all times.
Thank you. Mrs. Across the country, what do you feel about adding additional armed security to the school?
I think, uh, we don't want to, like Mr. Thomasin said, we have the SRO officer. I think that we need to arm our educators with more training and drills to teach our children. So that they know, so that they a hundred percent know what to do in those instances.
Thank you. And Mr. Sein, with increased school shooting and other shootings across the country, what do you feel about adding additional armed security to the school?
Yeah, I think it kind of, well, Mr. Thomasin said, like, I, I'm not an expert in, in this, uh. Field at all, um, I, I would be disappointed in New Fane. I think using the guinea pig, you know, just like jumped into something, like little research was done into, um. I, I, I have no idea if like the possibility of paying and SRO for building is something. You know, but like, again, I'm not an expert, like, no. It, it's something that could certainly be discussed.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasin, what is your understanding of social-emotional learning and how is it being addressed in our schools?
Yeah, yeah, the social-emotional learning is a huge aspect for children today, it's not just on. Coming to school, going, something you have talked about, something that needs to be addressed at all times throughout the day with. With the children, but not to halve it, it's paramount, um, of importance when it comes to education, it's not just learning. It's making sure those kids are social, socially and emotionally well. And using the resources we have to educate those children. Just, I'm going to leave it there.
Thank you. Social, social learning and how is it being addressed in our schools?
I believe that the, through all of the extracurriculars and in clubs, students are engaging. In, in social learning without even knowing it, you know, they're, they're becoming, um. More, more adjusted to, um, this in-person. Communication which for some of them, they were robbed of through very, um, important developmental years of their lives with, with COVID. Um, obviously, it, it's very hard to learn anything if your emotional state is not good. Um, I mean, it's hard to do anything, or like, we all have work, we have bad days, um. Something's like weighing on your mind, it's going to be hard to function. So making sure that the, um, the district is, is really engaging in, in keeping all of our students. You know, making sure that all of their needs are met. Not just their, you know, did they pass this test, they, you know, achieve at this level. Really, really building a community out of the school.
Thank you. Your, your understanding of social-emotional learning and how is it being addressed in our schools?
Um, so I think that you guys have touched on it a little bit too, um, I think the biggest thing for social-emotional learning is, um. The teacher's ability to recognize that if a student is struggling, is it because they're having a bad day or is it because there's something bigger going on? So just asking questions, um, making them feel like there's a, somebody there to support them and a safe space to come and talk. Um, but I think, and, and part of that too is also reaching out to the parents to find out, is there anything happening? At home that you're noticing, is there anything that's concerning, has your child said anything that you feel like we should also be aware of so that we can get. The support that they need in place, um, whether it be seeing a guidance counselor, giving them, um, some extra time on different tasks in the class. Um, making sure that they are socializing with their kids and making friends, um, finding areas where you can promote positivity to them. So showing them something they've done really well and that you're proud of. Um, so I think that all helps support your mental health, if you feel like somebody's seeing you, hearing you and also. Responding to you in a positive way where they can, they can go home and feel like, you know what? My day didn't start out great, but I had this teacher or I had this staff member, or I had somebody. Show me that I, you know, I, I did something really good and they acknowledged it, or they recognized that I was off today. And they, they just said, hey, you know, are you, how are you doing today? You seem a little off, or, um, just engaging with them and also keeping the parents in the loop. Anything that they're noticing at the school that seems off throughout their, their year, their day. And so I think that's all important, which is hoping in that aspect of learning.
Thank you. What is your understanding of social-emotional learning and how is it being addressed in our schools?
I think when we sit here and I, I mean, I think a lot of my answers went back to professional development, training our staff, training our staff. This is just another one, but it's also supporting our staff. Giving the extra support in classrooms that need extra support. Giving extra support to, to teachers and counselors who need extra support. So that they can recognize when those children are struggling and they can offer the support that those kids need and offer the resources that they need. To help them succeed emotionally and, you know, socially.
Thank you very much. The last questions from the audience, so this, we can go right down the table. Uh, the audience member would like to know, do any of the candidates have immediate family members employed by the district? We'll start with you, Mrs. Bow.
Um, I do not have any immediate family members currently employed in the district. I do not have any immediate family employed in the district.
I don't either. Um, my wife has been in the structural at, at the elementary school for the last 18 months.
Thank you. And the last question, and again, we'll just go right down the table, so Mrs. Bow, this one's to you. In the face of dropping enrollment, how do you reduce costs to the taxpayer?
Oh, that's a great question, um, and honestly, I'm not a hundred percent certain how you do that, um. I think that would be something that we'd have to really look at the, the resources that we're using at the school and find out the areas where. Are there things that we can decrease the budget on? Um, that is something that I think throughout, if I were elected to the board, that is something I've learned throughout the first. Year of being on the board and learning more about the areas, um, the, the budget in general and where the money is going to. Um, it would probably require some hard decisions as far as where we can reallocate resources and areas that we can, um. Not cut funding, but decrease funding in a sense, um, but that's something that I think. I would have to really learn, um, in my first year and kind of get a better feel for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Odette, in the face of dropping enrollment, how do you reduce costs to the taxpayer?
Advocate public education and hope that the state and the federal government give you more money to support your programs. You start talking about cutting programs and taking away programs, we kind of defeat the purpose of what we've been building here. I think that the Board of Education has put out very fiscally responsible budgets in the past few years and I think that they will continue to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Sein, in the face of dropping enrollment, how can you reduce costs to the taxpayer?
Yeah, I kind of tackle both sentiments, um, if I were elected, that is definitely something that I would have to learn, um, first year of, you know. And I agree, I, I think that the board has done a really good job putting out responsible budgets. Somewhat in the taxpayer, um, so, uh, you know, this is, this whole thing is kind of, but, um. You know, I, I, I want to see the students of the district really, um, have lots of opportunities. I believe that this return to a school of excellence requires some sacrifice.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomasin, in the face of dropping enrollment, how do you reduce costs to the taxpayer?
Yeah, so I think the board works closely with the superintendent and his administrative team to develop an ongoing. Complicated budget that will support our students with the highest level of educational programming, on regardless of, uh, student level, what was on. With the budget being presented next week, the board has achieved a great balance between educational programs and activities. To be offered to students that are supported by state funding and local taxes. And the board just doesn't look at a budget year to year, over the last few years, the board and district leaders have been to maintain. A long-term approach to our budgeting, so if we look a few years down the road, we can ensure that we remain financially, fiscally responsible. And to be able to just pay those things.
Thank you very much. We have no further questions for the, from the audience, so that concludes our evening. On behalf of the PTSA, I would like to thank the school and its administration for allowing us to host the event here this evening.